Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us on this chilly morning. And we will start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
.............................................
Good morning. Here's a reminder to silence your cell phones this morning. Meeting documents are available for your review down on the end next to Commissioner Heiburger. And Craig and Carol are both here this morning if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. First item would be to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 22, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is consider a motion to approve the bills in the amount of 527,276.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment, and I don't have my bills up here, so I can't give you the exact number, but there was a refund to the city of Sioux Falls on the archive building, and that was just leftover funds after we built the building. Minnehaha County also would have gotten the refund. We didn't spend all the money that we had set aside for the building of that project. So it was eighty-some thousand dollars.
Correct. Good news. Good news for everyone. So thank you for pointing that out. So I had a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, there are reports with lots of really great information in them. We have a report from the Minnehaha County Juvenile Detention Center for December 2018. The Human Services provided their 2018 Minnehaha and Lincoln County annual reports and fourth-quarter reports, and I noticed that they are here this morning. If anyone had any questions on any of those reports?
Hi. Jamie Phelps with Human Services.
Good morning, Jamie. Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment that there's now the Alliance information on there that they have some new IT software that's helping them gather some of that data that we've been asking for in the last year or so. And so there was some very interesting information about Alliance for your reading.
Yeah, Alliance and Synergy were added, and I think probably the last half of that annual PowerPoint report is all regarding the supportive programs and outcomes that you had requested the last time we had spoke up here.
Right.
So we thought we'd be present in case you had any questions on those, since there's quite a few new screens in there with data and outcomes.
Are there any other questions for Jamie? I know the report has about fifty pages to it. There's a lot of information in there to digest, and I really do appreciate you guys spending time and the folks at IT for helping you guys kind of mine out all that data. That will be really helpful when you come and present budget reports and as we try to figure out the best way to allocate out our funds. So any other questions? All right. Thank you so much for coming this morning.
Thank you. And we do have a couple additional reports just to mention that'll be coming for outcomes for Synergy and Alliance that we will do in the near future once IT has time to circle back around to us. And we're going to have a couple more in terms of length of stay at residences for Synergy and some other factors that we have measured for Alliance in terms of outcomes.
Great. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
We also have the Minnehaha County Coroner Report for November of 2018. That takes us to personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next item is a special commission action to approve converting the sheriff's office lieutenant position. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning. Genotics with Human Resources. This morning, we would like to request authorization to convert a lieutenant position in the sheriff's office, which is a pay grade 22, to a captain, which is a pay grade 23 effective today. And this is to provide a more equitable division of responsibilities and help to improve the sheriff's office operations. Happy to answer any questions if you have any. Also, Sheriff Millsitt is here as well.
Are there any questions?
Second.
No comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item is abatements. There are none. Next item is notices and requests. There are none. Planning and zoning notices, there are none. So that takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storey, Commission Assistant. Before you, DPNO 66462 in the amount of $10,422.30 is for legal representation for the petitioner's spouse between April 2010 and March 2017. The couple was married June 21, 2017, then separated and vacated their home the next year on November 16, 2018, and are now pending finalization of the divorce. The petitioner is requesting release of the lien only insofar as a real property with no payment. The property is 215 North Hawthorne. It's pending sale and scheduled to close on February 8. The petitioner purchased the property on January 18, 2017, before the couple was married and is a sole owner.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Melinda? If not, I'm not sure if the petitioner is here. They're not required to say.
No.
Not here. If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
Just a comment.
Oh, Commissioner Heiburger.
A comment that according to South Dakota codified law 25-2-6, which I was trying to pull it up, and I can't find it that quickly, they're not under an obligation to cover the ex-spouse's liens because they were incurred prior to the purchase of this house, and the house was purchased in the sole name of the woman who has submitted this. And so with that information, I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oops, I'm supposed to do a roll call vote.
Barth? Heiburger?
Yes.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next item is an opportunity for public comment. Anybody that showed up on a day like this for public comment would get extra time.
Shh, don't say that.
Yeah, I don't see anybody rushing forward, so. Okay, that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider an application to transfer the retail on-sale liquor license held by R&amp;K Land Holdings. Olivia?
Yes. R&amp;K Land Holdings LLC sold Red Rock Bar &amp; Grill to Red Rock Bar &amp; Grill, Inc. as of January 1. And I will let you know that in the original packet, they left the state sales tax number blank. That's because they had applied for it, but the state hadn't sent them the actual information yet. But we did receive that, so it's all taken care of. And Mr. Rungy is not able to be here today. He let me know this morning.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on behalf of this? This is a public hearing. Any opponents? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved. I make a motion to allow that transfer?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth? Heiburger? Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. That takes us to item 11, and we have a briefing on Forward Sioux Falls. Mike Lynch, good morning.
Are you advancing the slides, Craig? Or do you want me to take them? Okay. Yeah, I'll take it. Very good. Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Lynch, Director of Investor Relations for Forward Sioux Falls. Thanks for having me here. I also want to acknowledge in the audience Jason Ball, President and CEO of the Chamber, and Justin Bentez, Public Affairs and Research Manager for the Chamber, whom you probably see on a regular Tuesday. So Forward Sioux Falls is something that I think most of you are aware of, and it is the premier economic development initiative that was begun in 1987 as a partnership between the Sioux Falls Development Foundation and the Sioux Falls Area Chamber of Commerce. And since that time, every five years since 1987, there's been a fundraising initiative, a campaign throughout the business community that has raised over $52 million. And in this past campaign, we raised $15.5 million, all that going toward different economic development initiatives. Just a little bit about the governance structure. Forward Sioux Falls has what is called a Joint Venture Management Committee, and that is comprised of the Executive Committee of the Sioux Falls Area Chamber and the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, as well as five appointed members, and we meet quarterly. Just a little summary of the funding, breakdown of the funding from Forward Sioux Falls from the past campaign compared to the national average. Forward Sioux Falls historically has used the National Community Development Services, or NCDs, as the campaign management company. And these two pie charts basically depict the 106 NCDs client organizations, as well as Forward Sioux Falls, and the distribution of funds from both public and private. And you can see that Sioux Falls is somewhat unique in the funding or in the dollars that are collected in that 79% is from private entities, private businesses, and 21% is from the public compared to the other 105 organizations represented by NCDs, which are 61%. The dollars collected are about 61%. So I just thought that would be an interesting comparison to put up. Just a little bit, you know, Forward Sioux Falls is all about elevating the economic vitality of the area, not just Sioux Falls, but of the Sioux Falls MSA, the Sioux Falls area. And again, some of these numbers widely distributed throughout the media. Construction values continue to increase, and we're never going to say that Forward Sioux Falls is certainly the only entity that lifts up the area's economy, but we do feel that the combination of all the different activities associated within each program has a lot to do with the positive direction that the Sioux Falls area has taken over the last several years. And construction values is just one data point that points to that. Another one certainly, Sioux Falls MSA job growth. Over 24,000 jobs have been added in the last eight years. The unemployment rate, as everyone knows, has been very low for quite some time. Sioux Falls, the Sioux Falls area has been quite resilient. Even during the past recession, those numbers were considerably better than the national The unemployment rate, however, is just part of the story. We also need to take a look at the labor participation rate. And in the Sioux Falls MSA, these are, this is data from 2017, it stands at almost 75% compared to 63, just a little over 63% nationally. And ultimately, what this means is that we have such a low unemployment rate, yet a higher-than-average, national-average labor participation rate, which means people who are age 18 to 65 are actually working at a much higher rate than they are nationally. So we certainly do have some exceptional challenges as it relates to workforce development, but we can't, we can't just sit on our laurels. We have to, you know, provide strategies that maximize the existing workforce as best that we can. The population, you know, again, a big component to enhancing the economy in Sioux Falls is to make sure that we have a good number of employees, those businesses that are in our area who are in need of workers. We're doing different strategies, which I'll touch upon a few here in just a little bit, that will hopefully attract more people to the Sioux Falls area. You know, we've added about 3% to our population growth over the last several years, which is great. It's positive. It's something we need to tout, but we're not just going to sit back. We're going to make sure that we continue to do our best to attract individuals to our area to enhance the workforce. So this is, and I will leave with you, and some of you may have this already, but this is a good brochure that really explains many of our major programs within the current initiative, which we'll go through here in just a little bit. The Strategic Workforce Action Agenda, really, all of these programs that are listed in here center around this Workforce Action Agenda. And what's interesting, I think, about the, conceptually, the way that our program comes together heading into each five-year campaign is that we are very methodical about what those dollars raised are going to be used for. So all these different programs are, for the most part, and sometimes, you know, we do add programming throughout that five-year program, but for the most part, those are established ahead of time so that when we go forward asking for funds for the initiative, people are going to know what those dollars are going to be utilized for. And in this current initiative, it's all about workforce attraction, development, and To that point, within the last seven or eight weeks, the Development Foundation and the Chamber, which basically are the two bodies certainly that hold the water with many of the programmatic activity contained in the initiative, the Development Foundation has hired a Vice President of Talent and Workforce Development, Denise Gazetta, and she is going to be launching some various strategies that will enhance ways in which we can attract more people here, utilizing marketing efforts, shared focus areas, just trying to do whatever we can to, you know, further grow the economy through these workforce strategies. In addition, SiouxFalls.com is a website that basically was created two years ago, and it focuses on the quality-of-life attributes of Sioux Falls. It's not a traditional job portal. It will be enhanced here in the upcoming year, but ultimately, I think the primary use for this would be for human resources departments that are looking to attract people that may not know a lot about Sioux Falls, because what SiouxFalls.com is going to do is to really focus on the quality-of-life attributes in an anecdotal way, using various vignettes that explain what it means to people to live here and why someone would want to move here, not just for a job, but for the other amenities that our area offers. In addition, the Sioux Falls Development Foundation has created WIN, which is Workforce Information Now. It's a digital, interactive, monthly newsletter that is sent out to Development Foundation And I mentioned to you before about the area of workforce development. These are the targeted populations that we're going to focus on: veterans, people with disabilities, reform defenders, retirees, refugees and immigrants, homeless, and at-risk youth, those who are already here that I think for many organizations in Sioux Falls can utilize these individuals from these different targeted populations and working with the Development Foundation and Chamber, finding ways to make sure that organizations that are in need are matched up with individuals contained within these targeted populations. This last summer, the Development Foundation held its first workforce summit, the WIN Summit, and they intend to do that again this upcoming summer. They had about 300 individuals attend, primarily focused, again, this wasn't a workforce summit for prospective employees as much as it was for those within the business community to gather together to talk about ways in which they have enhanced their workforce initiatives and to, you know, discuss their challenges as well. Foundation Park, another core program within the Forward Sioux Falls initiative. Again, lot of media exposure, 800-plus acres, South Dakota's first megasite. It is rail-certified at the intersection of our two interstates. Windchill is the anchor tenant, and they have just over 325,000 square feet right now of dedicated space. The other two tenants currently under construction out at Foundation Park are Dakota Carriers, Nordica Warehouses. The key thing here is that there's a prospect pipeline that continues to have a lot of good activity within it. So we expect many more good things to come in the upcoming months out at Foundation The Development Foundation has also hired a Director of Business Retention and Expansion, Mike Gray, and this will essentially be an opportunity to go out, visit with organizations to see what their challenges are, to see ways in which the Development Foundation can assist them, to make connections, to, again, just lift up their individual organization in any ways that they can. The Discovery District, again, the, you know, something that's been in the news quite substantially as of late. Biotech and medical research is the focus out at the Discovery District. And as is the case within much of the Forward Sioux Falls program, it really centers around the great partnerships that are established. Out at the Discovery District, the University of South Dakota, the Chamber, the Development Foundation, the city of Sioux Falls, Forward Sioux Falls, Board of Regents, all collectively have been able to make the Discovery District happen. These are the two anchor tenants that have been established. SAB Biotherapeutics, which will develop a human antibody, and Alumend, which focuses on natural vascular scaffolding therapy. But ultimately, and this is probably the thing about the Discovery District, it's probably a 15- to 20-year project when it's all built out, but it's really going to be unique from the standpoint of not only will there be these biotech and medical research facilities, it will also include retail and residential. Forward Sioux Falls also lifts up, helps to lift up the airport through marketing efforts, and I think we all realize the progress that the airport has made and how instrumental that is, not only from a quality-of-life perspective, but also to make sure that business has the flights and carriers needed to conduct their business. And this is just a slide showing the various other Forward Sioux Falls initiatives, all in the effort to grow our economy and continue the vibrancy that we've experienced throughout the past several years. And I know I went through that very quickly, but I knew that in the sake of time, I needed to.
I appreciate that. A lot of great information packed in there. Are there any questions for Mike? We really appreciate you coming this morning and providing that information and all the hard work that your organization and the Chamber does to keep our community the great place it is to live. So thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for Minnehaha County's continued investment in Forward Sioux Falls. Appreciate it very much.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I'll just make one quick comment, and that was when I came on the board about eight years ago. I think most people know we were in huge financial difficulties and stuff, and I remember Forward Sioux Falls coming and asking us for money and just like, what are we thinking? Commissioner Benega made a great speech about how it was important to be investing in our community, even though we were struggling ourselves, and we did, and we have continued to invest in it. And just looking back eight years, all the things that have happened and that we have been a part of it is pretty exciting, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our next item on our agenda. We have Dave Johnson here. He was not able to be with us at the end of the year, so we invited him to come in and tell us a little bit about where the Glory House is.
Good morning, Commission. Dave Johnson, President of the Glory House. I apologize for not being here earlier on. I do think the Commission needs to consider an ordinance about hoverboarding in homes as I took my eight-year-old to the emergency room that morning. So good news, nothing was broken. The bad news is that I wasn't here. So anyway, thank you for the opportunity to come in and just kind of give you an update. A lot has happened, and so I wanted to at least let you know kind of where we are at today in terms of moving forward with our program and the housing initiative that we have started and you've supported. So with the help from the county, we were able to move forward and essentially put our down payment on the first 24 units. That's been done, and we are now in the process of waiting for a whole lot of legal things, and the attorneys are working it out with Midwest Bank, who are going to be our tax credit partner. And they are coming to the agreements with, between Lloyd's, ourselves, South Dakota Housing, and themselves, and we are hoping to finalize it yet this week. And then with the expectation is that in, as soon as we can, break ground in March, if the weather permitting, or April, if it has to wait a little bit longer. Our goal would be to have the first phase of the project completed and ready for occupancy by October. I'm hoping September, but October is, I think, the farther-out date if need be. Yes, one of the things that happened, obviously, is that we, the federal government has decided, the Bureau of Prisons decided not to continue to contract. This is kind of a national trend, actually. Last year, I know their stepping stones at Mitchell went through, they lost their contract as well. And certainly, we're one of about six or eight that has happened over the last couple of years. And even though it was a shock to, I shouldn't say a total shock, it was somewhat shocking, it wasn't totally surprising in that the national trend has been that way. If you look at what the Bureau refers to as a statement of work, in the last three years, they had essentially taken almost everything out of it that has to deal with substance abuse, mental health care. They stopped looking at those things that, called criminogenic factors. They don't use, didn't want to utilize evidence-based programming in terms of, at least in the residential reentry centers, which is what our title would have been with the Federal Bureau of Prisons. So all that was gutted. So the writing was on the wall that they were trending in a different direction. We'd been in conversations at a national level, I belong to a national group, and we had been working hard and trying to convince the powers that be that maybe this wasn't such a great idea. Obviously, we didn't do a very good job because that trend still continued. It still is totally gutted out of the statement of work, it's called, and it's just not, it doesn't seem like it's that much of a priority. We know that we need to do those things at work to help our clients, whoever we work with, to get back on their feet, get back to being productive citizens. That's what we need to do. And so even though we were continuing that trend, the writing was on the wall that eventually this might happen. So as disappointing as it was, it also creates some opportunities, and that's kind of what our board and myself and our staff are looking at is, okay, so now that we have this other bed space and staff time, where else can we go and perhaps provide services? And the answer, you know, we're looking at different possibilities. We can take more people that are from local. We can take more people that need the substance abuse, mental health care, case management, employment, all those sort of things that we believe is necessary to help people get on their feet. Of course, the housing, the housing project is going to help us continue that as our clients and other offenders move out into the community and pay taxes and support their families and hopefully stay out of the courts. So, we're going to look for other opportunities. We've already started that process, and that's kind of where we're at today. That was a thumbnail sketch. Obviously, it's tough, you know, we've had to make some adjustments, we made some budget Tough decisions to make, but until that we feel comfortable and we'll be able to provide those services and make up some of the gaps in funding, we'll have to do those tough things. That's, that's part of any business, so.
Well, thank you for coming this morning. Are there any questions for Dave? All right, Commissioner Benniga.
I really don't have a question, Dave. I would just say that every meeting I've been at in any function I've ever been at, housing always comes up as an issue, and transitional housing, to get people back on their feet, is always a main objective because without that, they frankly cause trouble rather than solve trouble. And you're part of that solution, so I do appreciate the fact that you're able to help us. Even if there's transitions in funding, thinking outside the box and doing things differently is extremely important. That's why there's conversations about the Tree Eye Center, there's conversations about other programs that have never been discussed before, Mental Health Court. So, even if sometimes you're forced to do that kind of thing, I appreciate the fact that you're making that attempt.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank the county, you know, for investing into this housing project. It's, it's going to be an exciting piece to our community, and it's hard to measure what it does for the individual and the families that are involved. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for coming this morning. Okay, that takes us to item 13, where we'll consider a motion to approve the Sheriff's Office recommendation to terminate two emergency management subrecipient agreements. Welcome in your new capacity.
Sure gave me two days off. Here today, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management, basically to ask for approval to dissolve these two grants that we've been doing for several years, so.
Are there any questions?
Would make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second.
Just, one of the grants has to do with Ebola, and I'm glad to see Ebola in Minnehaha County is under control.
Yeah, they're common. Now, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much for coming this morning. Item 14, Legislative Update. Craig Dewey. Good morning. Welcome back from Pierre.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. It is good to be back in Sioux Falls on this cold Tuesday morning. You have received a legislative update last week. I was in Pierre for three days and visited with a number of different legislators and received a number of questions from different legislators about the county's input on certain bills, if the county had taken a position on different bills. And so, it was good to reestablish some of those relationships. You have seen the legislative update that has been typed out. There are some additional bills that have dropped at the session. Before, I would go into the additional bills that are not included on the update. I'd be happy to provide any answers to questions you'd have about the bills on the existing update.
Are there any questions for Craig?
All right.
Explaining those, so thank you.
Last Friday was the deadline for unlimited bill submission at the legislature. Upcoming this Friday is the deadline for legislators to submit up to three more bills. So, after this week, we should have a better idea of what the bill universe looks like for the 2019 legislative session. There were over 100 bills that dropped on Friday, over the weekend, and on Monday, and a few of those bills that I just wanted to update you on. House Bills 1096, 1100, 1160, 1167 are each bills that are called carcasses. That means they don't have any language that's attached to the bill, so it's going to be sitting around until legislation is further developed. But some of the subjects in regards to something that might be of county interest would be dealing with noxious weeds, landowner rights, as well as promoting greater efficiency and sales tax exemptions. As you commissioners are aware, the county has to pay certain sales and use taxes, so that is something that the legislature may consider tinkering with as well. And then certainly, there's also another bill in regards to promoting efficiency in healthcare programs. Since there is no language attached to those bills, we can't yet gauge what the impact of that legislation might be, but it will be forthcoming as the session moves forward. There is also a bill that dropped, House Bill 1160, that is supported by the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners as part of their legislative platform. There are a number of concerns in counties where the pipeline is being built across South Dakota, the Keystone XL Pipeline, and there is a fairly high threshold of two mills that is required for counties to expend before they would qualify for state assistance regarding disaster relief. And certainly, we observed in North Dakota, some of the protests that happened that garnered national media attention. And so, as construction is starting, this bill would lower that mill levy requirement from two mills down to point five mill. So, that would be of assistance to counties moving forward, and that bill has some pretty broad representation geographically across the state.
Craig, could I, already did interrupt. What's the value of two mills? Just estimate it, dollar-wise.
Sure. That is a great question. I would have to look into that and get back to you if Commissioner Heiburger has information.
I don't have it on me, but the State Association does have a sheet prepared already that has all the different counties and what the mill would be and where it would drop to. So, if I don't have it in my binder, we can get it because it's been prepared. I've seen it. I just don't remember the number.
And actually, now that we're continuing to talk about it, my memory has been jogged, and I believe it's in the range of about $20 million. So, it would be a substantial impact to the county should that threshold need to be crossed to receive assistance. So, if you would lower that to just half of one mill, it'd still be around $5 million. So, that would still be a significant expenditure for the county.
That would be Minnehaha County's number.
Correct, yes. All right, the next bill that dropped that is also part of the SDACC platform would be leftover money in the budget at the end of the fiscal year. This bill would require 25% of that to be deposited into the big fund, which is the Bridge Improvement Grant Fund, which would certainly help keep bridges up to good condition on our highways. Next is a bill that was part of the Minnehaha County legislative agenda, Senate Bill 106, which is dealing with allowing a local option bed, board, and booze tax to be established by the counties. And the language has been prime sponsored by Senator Wayne Steinhauer, District Nine, from the Hartford area, and he merely is mirroring the similar language that allows municipalities across the state to enact the local bed, board, and booze tax. And again, that would be permissive for local authority to determine if there's a need for that. I know that, given that the state is the entity who sets, the legislature sets the conditions for what is illegal or legal in the state, we can't control individuals' bad behavior, and so there are law enforcement costs due to bad behavior on behalf of different members of the public that are increasing at a rate that outpaces inflation. And so, it becomes difficult, as you know, to manage the county budget when the county budget can only grow by 3% or inflation, whichever is less. And so, some of these public safety costs are increasing anywhere from 5% to 9%. And inflation, as we know, for the 2019 year is going to be about 2.4%. So, that would allow certainly some local flexibility if the Commission would determine that that would be favorable, and in the end, that decision would also certainly be referable to the ballot for a vote should the local population not feel that there is a compelling need to enact a local bed, board, and booze tax. There are three other bills left here that are of note. One that the SDACC sent out a legislative alert on is Senate Bill 110, and that would allow a redistribution of tax dollars related to a certain motor fuel. And the history on this bill, because I know at least one commissioner had asked questions about this, the bill is prime sponsored by Senator Stace Nelson, and it was in regards to feedback that he had received from some of his local commissioners about some budget challenges that they were facing. In the past, the state had implemented a refund program for ag producers who would end up purchasing fuel in town where they would have to pay the tax versus if they would have bought the dyed fuel. There was no tax on it. The state would institute or send out individual refunds to different farmers. The state determined that that was a very inefficient process, so the state had changed that policy to provide blocks of money to different organizations that supported agriculture and allowed them to use that to support agriculture. Well, this bill, Senate Bill 110, would increase the distribution from, or to counties and townships from $700,000, it would more than double it to $1.5 million, and that would be distributed directly to counties and townships in addition with the remaining expenditures. Any questions? I guess there is one more comment on that bill before I go to questions. Since that is an SDCC item, the Association did ask if county commissions would be willing to draft a letter of support to send into the committee that will be hearing that bill. Certainly would be open to your input or discussion on that issue, and would also be happy to answer any questions regarding this bill.
Commissioner Kerski.
How's the distribution of that money determined?
The district, in Senate Bill 110?
Yeah.
Is determined in statute under Section 10-47B-149, and there are, looks like seven different, or I'm sorry, not seven, nine different portions where money is allocated.
So, it's not based on where the sale occurs, or?
That would be something that I need to look further into since this bill is one that is fairly new. I believe it dropped around Friday, so I'm still trying to learn more about it, but I'll follow up with you.
Any more information would help, Craig. Thank you.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I have two questions, one on Senate Bill 110. I did read through the bill, and in that bill, prior to the bill dropping, there was a percentage that was going to the different counties, and they had increased that amount, and that's what changed in that bill. If you read through it, the very last line is struck, and that would have been the amount that was given to the counties. I don't remember what it was, was a dollar amount. But my question about would be, is that money from that bill earmarked to something specifically since that's motor vehicle fuel tax? Does that go back to roads and bridges, or does that go to the general fund of the county? And my other question, and I didn't see that when I read through that, and so that would be my question, and maybe when you're reading through it quicker, better than I did. My other question was, is there a bill number on that 25% for the big fund?
I'll answer your second question first because that's a quick one to answer, that's Senate Bill 103.
Okay.
And then to answer your question about where the dollars go, the bill does mention in subsection seven, that is being struck, that the money provided to counties and townships would total $700,000. So, since that would go to 66 counties across the state, you can appreciate that that dollar amount would have been relatively small for each county. As far as where the dollars would be deposited, if this bill's enacted, I will also have to look into that as well.
Commissioner Heiburger.
And item number one on that list of seven or nine or whatever tells the amount that they've increased from that 870, it was like 1.2 or, I don't remember.
1.5 million.
1.5, okay. Thank you.
And it actually is distributed to the counties and townships according to a different subsection of law, so that should be an easy thing to specify for you.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I have another comment. Just, I had Craig bring it up, that the Association had asked for a letter of support, and Commissioner Kerski has a few more questions before we do that, but I would urge us to do a letter of support, but I don't know if we can possibly wait till next week, Tuesday, and then it could go out by email or something, because I think it's going to be heard next week, Wednesday. I think that's the thought, is that it will be heard next week, Wednesday in committee, and they would like to have letters of support before that time. So, it would actually give us some time during the week, or if you don't want to do a letter of support at this time.
Well, I think we could certainly have Craig do some more, have some more time with this bill, do, ask some of these questions that have been raised today, and if it's not going to be heard for, until after our next commission meeting, then if you could bring that information back, and perhaps we could have a letter of support drafted so that if the Commission should decide at that point to go ahead and do a letter of support, that it could be ready to go and be there before the hearing on Wednesday.
It appears to me Carol Muller, the Commission Administrative Officer, just looked at the LRC's website, and the most updated information is that the bill will be coming up on January 30th. So, that would not be next week. January 30th would be tomorrow, being Wednesday.
The email that I had gotten last night, excuse me, said that that had been deferred, but I will check my email again, but my email last night said it was deferred for a week.
Okay. I have followed up with the SDACC. For some reason, I was not getting the different legislative emails coming from them for this 2019 session, so clearly I didn't receive that information.
I know we did get an email really late in the day yesterday that the couple of items that they said were going to be up on the 30th were deferred, so I just honestly can't remember, and I don't have that with me right now.
I will, I will look and let you know, Craig.
All right. Then, as far as understanding the direction that you as a Commissioner are providing, I will go and answer, look for information to answer those questions, and then circle back with you next week for further instructions regarding whether or not to draft a letter.
I think, I think that's, makes sense.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. And then the last two bills that are here that have dropped that I wanted to update you on are Senate Bills 111 and 112. Senate Bill 111 would require certain first responder licenses for emergency medical response in certain rural areas. I'm trying to ascertain if that would have any material impact on Minnehaha County or not, or if the legislation is really being tailored towards the most rural counties in the state. And then the last bill that I wanted to bring to your attention was Senate Bill 112. It deals with non-crop land assessment being changed as far as its classification. If it has been grazing for over 10 years, the Director of Equalization has been instructed to change whatever ag classification currently exists on the books after 10 years. If it has constantly been a non-crop land used for grazing, that would automatically get changed then, according to the Director of Equalization's records. Would be happy to answer any other questions for you. Certainly, more bills will continue to drop this week, and look forward to going back to Pierre here at some point. And I guess one last item, the juvenile detention center workers have a desire to be part of Class B retirement. That's a change that had been, that had come before you as a Commission last year in the summer, and that bill came up before the House Retirement Laws Committee last week. I was in Pierre testifying on that. I can further update you on some of the ins and outs of that discussion after the Commission meeting, but it did pass out of committee, five to zero, and is progressing along. The changes were for the juvenile detention center workers were wrapped into a larger retirement system bill that made changes that were required to be in compliance with IRS guidelines and directives. So, that bill is continuing to work its way through the process. If you have any other comments, though, about the legislature, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Anything else? Thank you so much. I know this is a busy time of year, a lot going on, and so we appreciate your work on our behalf on this, these topics.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 15, Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports this week?
I have a couple, Madam Chair. Last night, Planning and Zoning met in this room, and we had an overflow crowd. In fact, we opened the blinds back there, and we had a crowd standing on the other side, even though there's no audio for them anymore, something we might consider putting back in. In any case, we had a hog barn, a cattle barn, a... back in. In any case, we had a hog barn, a cattle barn, a wedding barn, and a gravel pit, which is, it's like the trifecta, except it's four things. In any case, when I started my truck to go home, it was 10:44. And Donna was here from Highway, Tony from Legal, and Tony was here running the program. It was a little bit contentious, I would say. There were a lot of disappointed people that one way or the other. However, we, we made a few changes on a couple of the projects and basically approved them all. The other thing I was going to report on is that I went to the Fire Chiefs Dinner on Saturday night, and it was at Rosenbauer's and Lyons', and Chief Leroy Koopman of Colton has retired. He spent 55 years, 55 years as a volunteer firefighter, and 40 years, 40 years as chief of the Colton Fire Department. He was a founding member of the Fire Chiefs Association, represented at his own expense the volunteer firefighters of South Dakota and Washington, D.C. And they had a wonderful video about his career, showing him from youth to, similar to where I am. And it was really a wonderful event. On Wednesday, the sheriff went to the Colton annual meeting and presented a copy of our, our poster for Colton, Tiopie to the chief. And I will say that the museum whipped that up in like a day and a half, and the sheriff was gracious enough to go and present it, and he said that Chief Koopman was, his eyes were full. And the same thing could be said Saturday night when I read a proclamation from our chairperson, and it was a good time. Craig and my wife went with me. And Craig, do you have any other comment or anything?
It was a great event. You articulated quite a lot.
Yep, it's, can be a great job.
All right, well, thank you, and congratulations to Chief Koopman. That is pretty amazing service, and.
One more thing, he's got, his kids are all firefighters, and I met his grandson, Kyle, who is also a firefighter. I mean, that's pretty amazing.
Quite a legacy. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Item 16, new business. Any new business? 17, old business?
It's cold.
That is new and old business.
It's pretty old.
Yes, I would agree. It is cold, and we hope everyone, if you don't have to travel, if you have the opportunity, stay inside. I think that would, all of our emergency and first responders would appreciate not having to rescue anybody in the next couple of days. Okay, that takes us to the end of our agenda. We have no executive meeting today, so I had entertained a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone.